Good evening and welcome to the District 196 regularly scheduled school board meeting. At this time, please rise if you are able to join me in the pledge of allegiance. After the pledge, please remain standing for a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I would like us to share a brief moment of silence for District 196 school bus driver Janice Anderson, who recently passed away. All right, good evening, school board, and a happy belated Mother's Day to the mothers on our board and in our audience today. First item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. There is no addition to the additions or deletions to the agenda as outlined. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Anna, second by Sakoudin. All those in favor of approval of the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a seven zero vote, which brings us to our very first item on the agenda, which is our recognition items. And at this time, I would like to welcome Nandi Rick to the podium to introduce the Minnesota Future Health Professionals of America Advisor of the Year and the group's State Leadership Conference Award winners.
Will you run, don't move, come a little bit. Good evening, board members, Chairperson Johnson and Superintendent Bolsoni. My name is Nandi Rick, and I am pleased to be here tonight to recognize the District 196 Chapter of the Health Occupations Students of America, better known as HOSA. HOSA is a student-led organization whose mission is to empower future health professionals to become leaders in the global health community through education, collaboration, and experience. We have many celebrations to share with you tonight, starting with the Apple Valley HOSA Advisor, Jim Lynch. Jim was awarded the Minnesota HOSA Advisor of the Year. We would also like to give a shout out to our entire District 196 HOSA Chapter for being awarded as the Minnesota HOSA Hype Award. I would like to turn the presentation over to Subana Sadini, Eastview High School Senior and President of the District 196 HOSA Chapter.
Hi, I'm Subana. I'm the President of the District 196 HOSA Chapter. At the 2025 State Leadership Conference, our advisor, Mr. Lynch from Apple Valley High School, won the Advisor of the Year Award, along with our entire chapter earning the HOSA Hype Award. We also have our other advisors here today from Eastview High School. We have Mr. Brewer from Eagan High School. We have Mr. Kolminen. And from Rosemont High School, we have Mrs. Bratz. And now to our actual award winners from Eastview High School. We have Saif Aziz, Taj Bora, Evelyn Clark, and Ana Riscalla, that won first place in biomedical debate. Gayishri Badri, third place in ATC Leadership. Janet Bahilu, first place in healthcare issues. And first place in occupational therapy. Amy Nguyen, first place in medical law and ethics. Nayla Venter, first place in health career display. From Eagan High School, we have Sahasra Juva, Harjit Palani Kumar, and Isaac Victor, that won third place in biomedical debate. Zach Browning, Tyler Halfley, Jonathan Rubin, and Gavin Yang, second place in mental health promotion. Sahasra Juva, District Vice President, second place in occupational therapy, first place in ATC career development. Nicole Lynn, first place in pharmacy science. Jonathan Rubin, first place in epidemiology. Maya Wong, third place in medical reading, second place in ATC anatomy and physiology. Alina Chang and Chloe Chang, first place in healthcare issues exam. And from Rosemont High School, we have Lydia Ben, Grace Bosima, and Beth Kabete, District Treasurer, third place in HOSABLE. Marissa Lisk, third place in sports medicine and first place in physical therapy. Naomi Teclamerium, HOSA Officer, and Caitlin Trask, second place in sports medicine.
We would also like to recognize and thank the family and friends of the HOSA team members that are here celebrating with us tonight, if you wouldn't mind standing. Thank you, Chairperson Johnson, School Board Members, and Superintendent Bolsoni for recognizing the student group this evening.
Excellent. Congratulations, excellent presentation. Great leadership. Great job. Amazing. Congratulations. Excellent job. Amazing. Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations. Fantastic. Congratulations. Congratulations. Great work. Congratulations. Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations. Thanks so much for being here. Absolutely. Thanks so much. Great job. Thank you. Great job. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to welcome Bruce Miller, Eastview High School Principal, and Pete Roback, Rosemont High School Principal, to the podium to introduce each of their schools' Minnesota Aspirations in Computer Science Award winners.
Welcome. Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Bolsoni, and School Board Members. I'm not Pete Roback. I am Brian Fendrick. I'm a teacher at Rosemont High School. I teach mathematics and computer science. This is my 39th year teaching and 20 wonderful years at Rosemont High School. And I'm here to talk about our award winners for the Minnesota Aspirations in Computing, which is the flagship offering of the Minnesota Technology Association, an official state affiliate of the National Center for Women in Information Technology Aspirations in Computing Program. The Minnesota Aspirations in Computing Program is dedicated to inspiring young women in high school, grades nine through 12, and each year it recognizes deserving young women celebrating these students' computing achievements, enthusiasm for technology, leadership, community involvement, involvement, and resilience. This year, the state of Minnesota had one national award winner, 12 state winners, and national honorable mention winners. Three of those national award winners were from District 196. Two of them were from Rosemont High School. Our first, Beth Kabeta, our senior at Rosemont High School. She is working on applying learning models for sign language translation and is a teacher at Kids for Code. She plans to pursue a degree in biomedical engineering on the pre-med track, and she has been offered an internship this summer at General Mills. Lassie Pandari, a sophomore at Rosemont High School. By the way, I've had both of these young ladies in class. They're wonderful, just incredible people. She discovered her passion for STEM during her internship at Optum, where she worked closely with UX designers. Lassie is also a two-time state qualifier in DECA, a debate state quarter finalist, and actively participates in student council. Lassie has also been offered an internship this summer coming at Land O' Lakes. Good evening. I'm here to introduce our Eastview junior, Advika Choudhury, who is a National Honorable Mention recipient for Minnesota Aspirations in Computing. She started her journey in STEM in the third grade. Now she spends her time as a captain and software lead for our Eastview First Robotics Team. That's for inspiration and recognition of science and technology. In addition, she leads STEM initiatives such as Girls Who Code, Tech novation, which is a program that equips young women to become tech entrepreneurs and leaders. And she is the founder of Her First, which is a resource for girls all over the world seeking support through Advika's mentorship, networking with corporate partners for funding and exposure to other opportunities for girls working to be more involved in First Robotics. Through our Eastview Mentor Program, she gained valuable field experience with Securing and Financial in their IT software department as a learning intern. And she also serves on our District 196 Gifted and Talented Advisory Board. And in her spare time, she's a member of our debate team. So, Advika.
Amazing. Congratulations. Amazing. Congratulations.
Very impressive. Yeah.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
Very impressive. Congratulations.
Great job. Amazing.
Very impressive. Congratulations.
All right. Next up, I'd like to welcome Eagan High School Principal Polly Rikowski to the podium to introduce Kevin Dirksen, the 2025 Minnesota High School Chemistry Teaching Award winner.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, Chairperson Johnson, and Superintendent Bolsoni. I am Polly Rikowski, the principal at Eagan High School. Thank you for inviting us here tonight. I'm honored to present Mr. Kevin Dirksen, who is celebrating his 25th year in District 196, all of it at Eagan High School. He is a chemistry and physics teacher and the science department leader at our school. Mr. Dirksen has received the 2025 Minnesota High School Chemistry Teaching Award, given to an outstanding high school chemistry teacher, for excellence in high school chemistry teaching. This prestigious award recognizes his innovative work as a teacher. Mr. Stephen Thompson, Assistant Principal at Eagan High School, wrote this about him. Kevin possesses a profound understanding of his subject and conveys his lessons with enthusiasm and clarity. He has developed a series of videos related to his courses, which have become invaluable resources for his students. He then uses those videos to flip his classroom so that he can spend more time during class on hands-on activities and labs. Beyond the classroom, Mr. Dirksen has taken on a variety of coaching and co-curricular activities. He has served as a science Olympiad coach, football coach, track coach, cross-country coach, newspaper advisor, and faculty support for a number of student-led clubs. He is currently a volunteer coach for the ISD 196 Mountain Bike Team, which he co-founded in 2011. For his innovative chemistry teaching methods and his outstanding contributions to the Eagan High School community, the Minnesota American Chemical Society is proud to honor Kevin with this award. It's going to be presented officially at the May meeting at the 3M Innovation Center tomorrow, May 13. He will receive a plaque and a $600 honorarium from the ACM, but he has to do a presentation first. And he told me it has to be 30 to 45 minutes long, so...
Oh!
Yeah, it's the assignment. He's ready. Congratulations, Kevin. We're very proud of your accomplishments as a teacher and leader in our school, in our district. Kevin does not have his family here tonight because they're all up in Blaine at soccer events and tournaments, so he is probably headed there later. I would, knowing him, I would ask that he is recognized by the board tonight, as we have honored him at Eagan High School as well. Congratulations.
Amazing work.
Nice job, Kevin. Impressive as always. You too.
Good to see you, Polly.
Thanks, Polly. That was a wonderful one.
Thank you. Good to see you.
And last, under recognition, but certainly not least, I'd like to welcome Ryan Rosine, Scott Voss, and Chris McDonald to the podium. They each will introduce their schools' 2025 State Speech Tournament winners.
All right. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, Board Members, Superintendent Bolsoni. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. My name is Ryan Rosine, and I have the honor of serving as the head speech coach at Eastview High School. And tonight, we are here to recognize some of our medalists at the, from the 2025 Minnesota State High School League State Speech Tournament. And believe me, the recognition they deserve is tremendous in terms of all of the work and all of their accomplishments. So I'd like to start with a couple of our state runner-up, runner-up. First of all, Nick Zilstra, if you want to step forward. Nick is in the category of extemporaneous speaking, where he gives speeches on current events. The only trick is, he learns his questions 30 minutes before he speaks. Exactly. And his question this year, at the final round of the state tournament, was his prediction about the economy in 2025. So I didn't ask him exactly what he said, because he could be very right, he could be off, but knowing how smart he is, he's probably going to be spot on, to be honest with you. I also now want to have Test Alma come on up. She was state runner-up in the category of humor, and she was doing the piece School of Rock, taking that movie and play in that and putting it into a 10-minute humor piece. And she had a tremendous day. Joseph Paniker was a state champion in the category of great speeches. His speech was Huey Long's Every Man a King from 1934. And in that category, he had to analyze the speech with a rhetorical model and then present why it still matters today in the year 2025. And finally, I want to have Sahitha Lurie step forward. Now Sahitha's had, was a state champion in the category of creative. She wrote a piece called Mismatched. But here's the other thing about Sahitha, you've seen her before, and her name mentioned, because she becomes the sixth three-time Class AA State Champion in the state speech tournament history. And she's the first ever Eastview speaker to earn that honor. With our success at the state tournament, Eastview places fourth in total medals earned in Class AA competition with 190 at the state tournament. And we now place seventh in total gold medals and state champions in all classes earned, which is with 35. So we are very proud of our team, we're very proud of our coaches, and of course, we're proud of the kids and their dedication for what they do for this activity. So, thank you for your support, thank you for having us tonight.
Amazing job. Was it going to be good or bad? Up or down? No, no. Congratulations. Awesome job. Good to see you. Thanks for coming.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, School Board Members, and Superintendent Bolsoni. My name is Scott Voss. I'm the Director of Apple Valley Speech and Debate, and I am here with a few of our participants at the Minnesota State High School Speech Tournament earlier this spring. I'd like to introduce our participants. I'll begin with Brandon Vergara Villalobos, who is a senior. He was part of a duo, and they took second in the state. His partner, Hayden Johnson, could not be here. Brandon is actually an extraordinary case, because he started as a sophomore and had never done any type of acting before in his life. By the end of his junior year, he was nationally ranked. And we have had the opportunity to see him grow and do really well here. The piece that they performed was a cutting from the short story that many of you probably read in ninth grade, The Most Dangerous Game. And so they brought that to life. Also, taking second place, right behind Sahitha, was Theo Pollock, who is a senior this year. And while Theo has done many other events, it was towards the end of his senior year, he decided to write this parody of our immigration system and really allowed us to, like, laugh at some of these things that are, at times, pretty painful to watch. And so he was able to, I think, bring light to an issue and at the same time, allow people to find a little bit of mirth in all of it. So, congratulations to Theo, who took second. And then we also had two state champions. We have Israel Yacine, who is a junior at Apple Valley High School. She is the state champion in original oratory. And her oratory is called The Fruits of Our Labor. And it's really a, an argument about how we don't maintain our focus on things that are truly important. And specifically, she talks about maintaining focus on civil rights. And then our other state champion is Mahalit Samuel, who is a ninth grader. She won the category of pros, performing a cutting from the book, The Hate U Give. And beyond just the amazing adventure of a ninth grader winning the event, the final round was so clearly in her favor that the second place was far behind. And so it was really pretty exciting to see Mahalit find her voice in this particular space. Now, you may notice that I skipped over someone. I skipped over Isaiah Craig, who is a senior this year. He took third in the category of original oratory, and his thesis is on the weaponization of hope. But I end with Isaiah, because his story is, I think, important to our moment right here. Isaiah came to District 196 after his ninth grade year in another district. And among other reasons, Isaiah just hadn't found that thing quite yet. And when he came to Apple Valley, his mom actually made him show up for speech camp before the beginning of sophomore year, because she says, "I just want you to meet some people." By the end of the year, Isaiah Craig was ranked third in the nation. And he truly found, like, his thing. This thing that was able to allow him to say some things that he felt were really, really, really important. He came to our district and found this, and found our voice. And I end there, because I want to thank you. In all the years that I've worked at Apple Valley High School, I have always felt tremendously supported by this community. And you have allowed a bevy of schools to really rise to prominence, not only within the state, but within the nation. And so that is, that is a statement about your commitment to maintaining a focus on these things. And so we are ever grateful. Congratulations to you, congratulations to our students, and congratulations to our parents. We have, we have Mahalit's father here, Mr. Hee. So we are grateful for everybody.
Amazing work. Congratulations.
Wow. So impressive. Congratulations. So impressive. Congratulations.
All right. Well, just sending you...
We'll get him.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
We have a couple times, but it's like six hours.
All right. Good evening. Board Chairman Johnson and Superintendent Bolsoni, along with the rest of the school board, we thank you again for having us here to recognize the outstanding achievements of our students. I echo what Mr. Voss said about appreciating all of the support that the school district gives to us, so that we can have a strong debate, speech, theater programs, to have those fine arts, to allow our students to tap into those. A couple of interesting facts. Scott Voss and I actually went to college together and competed at Mankato together, so we've known each other a very long time. The second interesting fact is, it's entertaining to see the types of careers that our students pursue. And the last couple of weeks, we added a brand-new career that we never thought we would. Pope Leo XIV is also a former speech and debate competitor and an advisor after he left high school. So, see, it can take you anywhere, right? Today, we're here to honor Param Tucker, who was the third-place finisher in extemporaneous speaking, right behind Nick from Eastview. It was tough competition in the final round. What made it really tough, I think, for Param to put his, you know, best effort through there, is he had to work really hard while also flying to the East Coast three times during that lead-up to the state tournament, while he was looking at the three colleges that he was considering. Now, you may have heard of their small schools out east, Princeton, Yale, and Harvard. He has chosen to attend Harvard, which is great. So, Param will be a freshman at Harvard University in the fall. So, his parents are here. Thank you for being here tonight, if you stand to be recognized. It's always great to have the parents here. They're very supportive. That's the other strong element to make a successful program in our district, is not only the strong support from the school board and the administration and the teachers in our building, but from the parents, who see the importance of the spoken word and how we develop those skills, so that they can integrate them into whatever it is they decide to do. So, join me in congratulating Param Tucker, third place in extemporaneous speaking.
My topic was also a prediction of the US economy, except it was more about the consumer.
So what was your prediction, up or down?
It was whether consumers justify the loss of consumer profit.
I like it. Okay. Like it. Good luck next year in the fall.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our superintendents' recognition, so I will turn it over to Superintendent Bolsoni for recognition of students and staff.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Johnson, and welcome, everybody. Congratulations to seniors Michaela Moran of Apple Valley High School, Eva Lettenberg of Eagan High School, Gracie Puet of Eastview, and Sophie Strammel of Rosemont High School, being selected by their schools as the 2025 Athena Award recipients. The Athena Awards are announced annually to recognize outstanding senior female athletes in our high schools for their excellence in individual and team sport achievements. This year's recipients were recognized at a banquet in St. Paul in April. Next, I want to thank our educators and school nurses, who we celebrated May 5 through May 9 during Teacher and School Nurses Appreciation Week. Our teachers help students acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to become successful contributing members of society. We also recognize our school nurses for promoting health and safety and taking care of our students in our schools each day. Congratulations also to Rosemont High School students, who earned exceptional honors at the 2025 DECA International Career Development Conference, held in April. Twenty-three District 196 students proudly represented the district, competing with more than 22,000 top business and marketing students from around the globe. Seven Rosemont students, Max Kowalski, Alexis Olson, Grace Mensek, Sylvie Atkinson, Sarah Labare, Nick Garnsworthi, and Molly Pittson finished in the top 10 in their events. May this month is Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. The 2025 theme is a legacy of leadership and resilience. Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month posters feature bamboo as a symbol of strength, endurance, and resilience. In District 196, our vision is to provide students, families, and employees with experiences that honor the diverse cultures within our communities. This month, we celebrate the students, families, and employees of Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander heritage. Finally, I want to recognize the musical performers and stage crews who participated in the high school musical productions of Encore, Bravo, On Stage, and the Songbook Experience. These talented productions packed our theaters, impressed audiences, and inspired our younger students across the district. I also want to recognize the 25th anniversary milestone for Rosemont High School's Stephen Alba, as the director of the show, demonstrating his longstanding dedication and leadership in the Rosemont High School community. On Sunday, May 4, he welcomed more than 100 choir alumni who joined in that afternoon's production onstage. Thank you, and that concludes my report for tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, Superintendent Bolsoni. Next on the agenda is our special communication requests. We have two speakers signed up for the special communication request.
around the globe. Seven Rosemont students, Max Kowalski, Alexis Olson, Grace Mensek, Sylvie Atkinson, Sarah Labare, Nick Garnsworthi, and Molly Pittson finished in the top 10 in their events. May this month is Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. The 2025 theme is a legacy of leadership and resilience. Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month posters feature bamboo as a symbol of strength, endurance, and resilience. In District 196, our vision is to provide students, families, and employees with experiences that honor the diverse cultures within our communities. This month, we celebrate the students, families, and employees of Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander heritage. Finally, I want to recognize the musical performers and stage crews who participated in the high school musical productions of Encore, Bravo, On Stage, and The Songbook Experience. These talented productions packed our theaters, impressed audiences, and inspired our younger students across the district. I also want to recognize the 25th anniversary milestone for Rosemont High School's Stephen Alba as the director of the show, demonstrating his longstanding dedication and leadership in the Rosemont High School community. On Sunday, May 4th, he welcomed more than 100 choir alumni who joined in that afternoon's production onstage. Thank you, and that concludes my report for tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, Superintendent Bossoni. Next on the agenda is our special communication requests. We have two speakers signed up for special communication requests. Members of the public who would like to address the board can do so in a variety of ways, and our special communication request is one of our more formal ways to address the board. Speakers are reminded to refrain from any personal criticisms during their special communication requests. And also, special communication request is a time for the board to listen to our speakers, and generally, the board is not having a formal response. However, if any questions are raised during the special communication request portion, a member of the board or administration will generally follow up with the speaker. Last but not least, for our speakers, just a little preview of how the special communication request works logistically. I'll invite you to the podium. Each speaker gets four minutes to speak. We have a little timer, and you'll see a little light on the podium. That light will turn green when your time starts. When it turns amber, you'll have 30 seconds remaining. And when it turns red, you'll hear a little beep, and please conclude your comments at that time. When you come, when I call your name, please come up to the podium, introduce yourself, and we will start your time. Our first speaker is Ms. Gina Rivas Castro. If you just want to start by introducing yourself in connection to the district.
I'm Dr. Gina Rivas Castro, and I have children that attend school in this district currently. Okay. So, good evening, everyone. Although I no longer have children riding district buses, I'm here tonight solely to ensure no other family experiences what mine has endured and to create awareness. In March of this year, the Minnesota Court of Appeals issued a ruling in my case that has profound implications and set precedent for every family whose children ride District 196 buses. In 2017, my children and I were struck by a school bus operated by this district. The driver was approaching the bus stop too fast for weather conditions and collided with my vehicle. What's critical to understand is what happened next. Because no police citation was issued at the scene, and because our district owns and operates its own buses, the district's attorneys invoked a Minnesota statute to shield themselves from accountability. The court ruling specifically granted the driver official immunity and then extended vicarious official immunity to the entire school district, effectively blocking any claim for damages. In the court's own words, generally, if the employee is found to have immunity, the claim against the municipal employer has been dismissed. Prior to the accident, I had repeatedly warned the district about the dangerous placement of this bus stop located at Argenta Trail and 70th Street, where vehicles consistently traveled at high speeds. That road has since been reconstructed from two lanes to four, clear evidence of the hazardous conditions. Yet despite my warnings, no action was taken. For years after the accident, I continued advocating for relocating this dangerous stop to inside our neighborhood. The district repeatedly refused to take action. Only after years of persistent effort did they finally agree, making it clear that schedule efficiency was valued over student safety. This immunity statute was designed for true emergency situations, yet it was applied to a situation where the driver's failure to follow proper driving protocols created the emergency. What's most alarming is the disparity this creates. School bus drivers employed directly by districts can be granted immunity, while drivers from private companies contracted by schools do not receive the same protection, as well as private schools do not have access to this immunity law. The consequences have been devastating, and I've been left bearing the financial burden of medical bills and future surgeries. Parents, you deserve to know, when you put your child on a District 196-owned bus, you may have no legal recourse if something goes wrong, even if the district ignored safety concerns and the driver failed to follow protocols. I urge this board to review policies regarding accident investigation and driver training, inform parents about this immunity gap so they can make informed decisions prior to putting their children on the school buses. I urge parents to advocate for reform, and for the board members to make the, to follow what I asked earlier. I cannot change the outcome for my family, but together, we can ensure other families don't face the same devastating situation without recourse. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to welcome our second speaker to the podium, Nemo Getty. If you can, just start by introducing yourself in connection to the district, and we'll start your time.
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the school board, and Superintendent Bossoni. My name is Nemo Getty. I'm a culture family advocate. I'm here tonight to speak about matters of importance to our district, our staff, and the students we serve. I want to begin by expressing appreciation for the steps that this district has taken to foster an inclusive and representative educational environment. Initiatives such as the Grow Your Own and the Pathway programs are commendable and a signal to commitment to diversity and equity. These programs aimed at increasing the numbers of teachers and social workers of color within our district are essential as our students' population becomes more diverse. The scholarships offered through these programs funded by the Minnesota Department of Education provide support to our staff, many of whom are support staff like myself, aspiring to advance their careers and deepen their service to our community. By investing in individuals with local connections and an understanding of our community needs, we are addressing the shortage of teachers and mental health professionals and enriching our educational landscape with diverse perspectives. We are grateful for the vision and effort that have brought these initiatives to fruition. And it is with this spirit of collaboration that I wish to address some of the challenges that remain. While we celebrate these strides, it's also my responsibility to bring to your attention certain challenges and barriers that have emerged, particularly concerning field placements for participants of these programs. Despite, despite the dedicated and academic performance demonstrated by the staff enrolled in these programs, we have encountered obstacles that, if unaddressed, could hinder the goals of these initiative aim to achieve. Initiative, initially, there was uncertainty regarding the possibility of completing field placement within our own district. Upon comparing our situation to that of colleagues in similar pathway programs in neighboring districts, we discovered that our district was an outlier in not providing in-district field placement opportunities to staff. While we appreciate the recent clarification that in-district placements are possible, the current requirement to take leave of absence presents a hardship, financial hardship for many, especially support staff. As data from the Minnesota Department of Education in the 2022-23 physical year indicates, the average salary of support staff is approximately half of that of teachers' average salary. Requiring a leave of absence under these circumstances could create financial strain and potentially delay graduation and licensure for these aspiring educators and social workers. For those in the Pathway to School Social Work Program, that would mean taking field placement during two summer blocks in non-school settings, which may not provide their most relevant experience and give us a chance to work alongside our dedicated and high-quality staff. We believe that by examining the models implemented by other school districts, we can find solutions to remove these barriers and promote the persistence and success of these staff. It is our hope that the district will align the implementations of these programs with its value, ensure that every participant has the best chance to succeed and contribute their skills to our schools and students. We are eager to work together to find practical and equitable solutions that would allow these programs to flourish and achieve their full potential. Thank you.
That concludes our special communication request portion of the meeting tonight, which brings us to our consent agenda board. We have 25 items on our consent agenda tonight. Those items include: the minutes of the April 14th, 2025, regular school board meeting; the minutes of the April 29th, 2025, regular special school board meeting; gifts, grants; schedule of investments for March 2025; summary of claims for March 2025; revenue and expenditures report for March 2025; treasuries report for March 2025; next grad license agreement; Great River Energy easement; assignment for Avalon Apartment in town home to Pinewood Elementary School attendance area; confirmation of unrequested leave of absence; employment agreement, probationary; employment agreement, additional service; personnel; termination and nonrenewal probationary teachers; workers' compensation insurance; 2024-25 spring break; spring budget adjustments; Falcon Ridge Middle School renovation; Scott Highlands Middle School addition and renovation, bid pack two; Apple Valley High School Activity Center addition and renovation, bid pack two; Thomas Lake Elementary School site improvements; Rosemont Middle School, bid pack three; agreement with the YMCA of the North for 2025 Summer School H Care Programs; and pay rates for substitute, temporary, and part-time community education employees. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members would like to remove tonight? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Catherine. Second, I'm sorry, motion by Rob, and that came from my right. Second by Jackie. Right? Okay, perfect. Those in favor of approval of the consent, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. That brings us to our reports portion of the, let me see, agenda. And I'd like to welcome Rachel Hughes and Kim Davis to the podium to discuss our strategic priorities report, MNMTSS Framework Implementation Progress.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Johnson, board members, and Superintendent Bossoni. I'm Rachel Hughes, Director of Instruction and Achievement. Tonight, we are excited to share about something called MNMTSS. It stands for Minnesota Multi-Tierred System of Support. Think of it like a roadmap that helps schools make sure every student gets what they need to learn and grow. We'll show you how this work connects to our district's strategic roadmap, where we are now, and how we're helping school leaders and staff work together as teams. This is informational only. No decisions are needed tonight. We want to share what we've been learning this year and how we're building a stronger, more supportive system for all students moving forward. Thank you. MNMTSS was created by the Minnesota Department of Education and is supported by state and federal grant funding. It's being used in many school districts across Minnesota, including ours. This is not just a one-year program. It's a long-term framework that helps schools use data and best practices to support all students. This year, we started learning about the framework and creating systems for consistent teams and data protocols, along with evidence-based instructional practices. Thanks to grant funding, these supports are free and available to all schools in Minnesota. MNMTSS fits right in with all four, four parts of our District 196 strategic roadmap. It helps us stay focused and work together to support student well-being, achievement, equity, and making sure our systems and resources are aligned. Right now and into next year, our main focus is on achievement, especially in the classroom, by strengthening teaching and learning for all students. So tonight, you'll hear what is MNMTSS, and how it helps students, what we've been learning this year, and how we're working with school leaders and staff for future implementation. To walk us through this, I'm happy to hand it over to our MNMTSS coordinator, Kim Davis. I just have to tell you, it's her birthday tonight, so happy birthday, Kim, and thanks for leading us in this important work.
Hello, and thank you for having me. I'm excited to share about all the work that has been going on this year with MNMTSS. As you know, incredible things have already been happening in District 196, work that truly reflects the passion, dedication, and excellence of our community. MNMTSS is focused on creating consistent, successful experiences for students, families, and staff across our entire system. It emphasizes aligning our efforts, using data to inform decision-making, and committing to continuous cycles of improvement. By establishing clear expectations for instructional practices, assessments, and curriculum, alignment supports improved student outcomes. It also promotes equitable and efficient allocation of resources, helping to ensure that every student, regardless of their school building, has access to a high-quality education. The Minnesota Multi-Tierred Systems of Support is not just another initiative or another program. It is a systematic framework for how we use data to drive decision-making, how our district and school teams work together in alignment to ensure our system works for every single student. The Minnesota Multi-Tierred Systems of Support is a framework that all of our district work should fall under. It is a way of ensuring continuous improvement by having frequent cycles of data-based decision-making and creating teams to implement action plans. MNMTSS is about equity. As we examine our systems and practices, there will be a need to align resources differently to respond to student and staff needs. In doing this, we will be eliminating barriers for learning for all students. MNMTSS gets to the root cause of why our system may not be working for all students and has tools to strategically plan for next steps. The MNMTSS framework includes five key areas: infrastructure, family and community engagement, multi-layered practices and support, assessment, and database decision-making. While strong work is already happening in each of these areas, MNMTSS focuses on aligning these efforts to ensure consistency and efficiency district-wide. Last spring, we conducted a self-assessment to identify priority areas, which have guided our focus this school year. Teams have been working on these priorities, developing action plans to support district-wide implementation next year. The areas highlighted in green were our learning focus for this year and will be further supported next year as we move into implementation. Aligned systems and practices bring significant benefits. When curriculum, instruction, and assessments are consistent across our schools, students are more likely to meet their learning goals. Alignment also improves resource allocation, enhances collaboration, and strengthens our collective impact by allowing staff to work within a shared cohesive framework. A strong MNMTSS structure depends on ongoing data review and reflection. In District 196, building administrators, district teams, and teacher teams are working together to align practices using this framework. Collaboration is essential to ensure school and district leaders share a clear purpose. Our first focus for next year is strengthening the infrastructure by building effective teams at both the district and school levels that use student data to guide decision-making. Assessment is a key focus for this year's learning work. By implementing and analyzing data from our universal screener, we can identify effective practices and areas for growth. As demonstrated in previous presentations on state and screening data, this work is ongoing. Next year, we strategically schedule data days that align with our fast bridge assessments to enable district, school, and classroom teams to meet and analyze data. This alignment helps us evaluate the effectiveness of our practices and respond to student needs. We are collaborating with teacher and school leaders to use these results to adjust instruction and better support all of our students. Our focus on using screening data to address needs within our Tier One instruction will continue next year. Tier One instruction represents the core curriculum, which is accessible to all students in the Here's what the Multi-Tierred Systems of Support looks like in the classroom, shown as a diamond model. Tier One is at the center. It's our core classroom instruction. All students get this every day from their teacher. The MTSS model strives to meet the needs of at least 80% of our students. To do this, we focus on consistent, high-quality teaching and evidence-based curriculum in every classroom, pre-K to transition plus. When students need more, we add Tier Two and Tier Three supports, which are small group or individual help on top of Tier One, not replacing it. This matters because strong Tier One teaching helps reduce the need for special education referrals by catching and addressing challenges early. Right now, our data, like MCA scores, show that we are not at 80% yet. That's why improving Tier One is a major focus for next year. We'll also keep working to better align Tier Two and Three supports so they're more consistent and effective across our district. MNMTSS works well for many districts because there is collaboration to build capacity at all levels. We have been strategic with making decisions alongside school leaders, teachers, and district leaders so that there is a shared understanding as we move forward. Teams have been meeting monthly to look at and talk about current systems in their buildings and map out priorities to develop steps towards implementation. This is what our building leaders say when they think about MNMTSS and how it will improve our system. We are very excited to be aligned in our efforts towards school improvement. It has been a joy to work alongside school leaders this year to share strategies and come up with creative solutions across our buildings. Our school administrators are excited about the alignment and consistent Teams have been meeting monthly to look at and talk about current systems in their buildings and map out priorities to develop steps towards implementation. This is what our building leaders say when they think about MNMTSS and how it will improve our system. "We are very excited to be aligned in our efforts towards school improvement. It has been a joy to work alongside school leaders this year to share strategies and come up with creative solutions across our buildings." Our school administrators are excited about the alignment and consistency that comes with MNMTSS and to have shared processes for looking at school-wide and district-wide data. We will continue to partner with MDE and other districts across the state to implement this work. Our goal with this presentation was to share information about engaging in the Minnesota Multi-Tiered Systems of Support, to create alignment and consistency with our district goals and instructional practices. Now you have seen what the MNMTSS framework looks like and what our focus areas are for next year: strong-aligned teams, database decision-making, strengthening and aligning our Tier One instruction, and consistency across our entire district. At this time, we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Excellent. Thank you very much for the wonderful presentation, and thank you for being here on your birthday to share it with us as well. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Skowden.
Just wanted to say happy birthday. Just wanted to follow up that, but good presentation, and especially when you put together and just said how this fits with our strategic priorities, that's a big bonus for me. Just my question is, how will we know if this MNTS is making measurable difference across all the four strategic priorities? Just more like a measurement. I know we have a lot of data, assessment is being set, we have a wealth of data and assessment tools, but how will we know? You know, like quick example, what measurements that we're going to use to tell us we make a difference in our strategic priorities? Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great question. First, it is the assessment data, looking at our student outcome data, so Fast Bridge data, MCA data, graduation rates. Also, thanks to MNMTSS, we have an assessment that we take together. So we did that last year, that really set what our priorities are, that's why it was Tier One, screening data. So that helped align where we're going to focus our efforts. We'll do that one more time at the end of this year to reestablish what our priorities are for next year. So thanks to this MNMTSS framework, they gave us assessment to be able to determine that, to make sure we're really focusing our efforts, because we can't do everything well, so hoping we will be really intentional.
Other questions or comments from board members?
I have a question. Thank you so much for all this information. It's really exciting to see what this can do for our kids, but I'm a little concerned about our teachers. From my eye, it looks like this might be adding some work onto their plates, and so I just wondered, is something being removed, or how are we being aware of our teachers?
That's a great question. Many of these things are things that we're already doing. So really, when we talk about Tier One and Core at the elementary world, that's in the elementary world, those are four new curricular pieces that they're doing. So when we say we're focusing on that, that is what we did this year, is really intentionally implement those curricular pieces. At the secondary world, many of our subject areas have standards, new standards right now. So as we go through that process of unpacking those standards to create our assessments, this work is embedded in that work.
Got it. Thank you.
And I would just, I'm just going to add to that, that all of our working teams that have been working to roll these forward have teachers as a part of those teams as well.
That's wonderful. Okay. Good to hear. Thank you.
Excellent. Just one other question, too. One, this presentation was excellent, too. Thank you for being here. You can get cake after, I promise, for your birthday cake. Out of curiosity, I really liked the slide you had that had the pillars and the things within the pillars that highlighted, really gave insight into how we're looking at this. I also love that you aligned them with how we are using the words around our strategic plan, with the learning, what we're having like the learning model right now, I caught on to that, really helping to reinforce how we're talking about it. I'm just kind of curious, what does that look like? Like, how are you looking, I think there were four or five items on the learning, which is great, I always tell people you can't learn everything at once, but what does it look like in terms of timeline of when you think we'll learn through all the layers? I can only guess it'll take time, but I'm just curious, like, is this an ongoing implementation? As we continue to learn, continue to implement, continue to learn, continue to implement, what does that look like?
Absolutely. So the ones that you saw in green that are in your packet, that really was learning work this year, right? And going into implementation work for next year, so really, infrastructure is that key piece, because if we can have clear, consistent teams across our district, then we have a way to do this work. Then, we hope to, after we do the assessment again, that's coming up from NMTSS, it will give us a couple more areas that we can now start doing the learning work for, and then next, the following year, that would be our implementation work, right? So we're slowly but surely adding to all the components and implementing them into our system.
Excellent. Like hearing that. I love that continuous in learning, continuous improvement, continuous implementation. You know, this is a big thing, we can't implement it all at once. So I love that we're picking the certain things to learn and implement, learn and implement, it's a really good visualization of how it fits into our strategic plan. Excellent. Any other questions or comments from board members? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. That brings us to our old business, and I would like to welcome Kaya Bruce to the podium to go over Administrative Regulation 801.5 AR. Should say, second reading of 801.5 AR.
Good evening Chairperson Johnson, members of the Board and Superintendent Bolsoni. Community Education is proposing an increase in facility use fees for indoor spaces at elementary and secondary schools in Class II, Class III, and Class IV, effective July 1st. To ensure our rates remain competitive and equitable, we conducted a market fee study in March comparing our facility rental rates to those of neighboring districts. The results indicated that our current fees are generally aligned with, and in some cases lower than, the average rates across these districts. The proposed adjustments for the 25-26 school year are intended to account for increased costs associated with, excuse me, facility scheduling, building supervision, and collaborative purchases of athletic equipment used by the community. These changes will also help us keep pace with inflation. In addition, we are proposing a revision to the due dates for community use applications for fields and grounds. This adjustment aims to better align the application process with the district-wide scheduling timeline. At this time, I request your approval for the proposed fees for the 25-26 school year, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Excellent. Thank you so much. This is an action item for the board tonight, so before we go into questions, is there a motion to approve the facility use fee increases as presented?
Move approval.
Motion by Jackie, second by Catherine. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Seems straightforward on a second reading. We have a motion to approve by Jackie, seconded by Catherine. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a seven-zero vote. Thank you very much. That brings us to our new business, and I would like to welcome Jill Coyle to the podium to go over our 2025-26 Overview of Student Rights and Responsibilities.
Good evening Chairperson Johnson, members of the Board and Superintendent Bolsoni. I am here before you tonight for a first reading of the 25-26 Overview of Student Rights and Responsibilities. You'll also hear me refer to that as our handbook, it's a little less of a mouthful. It's a long document that summarizes all of our key student policies and regulations in a user-friendly format packaged together so that it's easy for our students, families, and staff to review those key policies. Very long document, I have a very short presentation for you tonight, just hitting the high points, if you will. And then you also, in your packet, you should all have the complete document, and it's formatted in a fashion that you can see all of the edits, strikeouts for the deletions, and underlines for the additions, so you can follow along. So with that, we'll go ahead into the presentation. First, maybe just a word about the purpose. Why do we do this? Why do we have a handbook? I identified about three purposes, and you'll see them there in the presentation. One, as I said, we just need to communicate our student expectations, including our student discipline policy, so that all of our students and families have a clear understanding of the expectations at school. It also functions as a reference source on a variety of student rights and responsibilities, and it's really quite a broad range. You'll find topics like special education, health and safety notices, data privacy notices, student-to-student bullying, all sorts of topics, all there presented in a, again, a user-friendly format for our families. And then finally, in Minnesota law, there are a variety of requirements of items that we need to put in a handbook to provide notice to families. So for example, student bullying, we need to have that summarized in a handbook. Harassment needs to be summarized in a handbook. Pesticide notices, summarized in a handbook. We have to include a suicide prevention lifeline number, which is prominently displayed on the cover of the handbook as well. So we're solving all of those, or we are serving all of those purposes through our Continuing on, some thoughts about how we update it and how we communicate it annually. So first, it is updated annually. We do that in a variety of ways. We take a look at laws, to see if there's new laws that we need to incorporate into our handbook every year. We take a look at any policies that the Board updated, or regulations that the administration updated, and make sure that's infused into the handbook. And then we solicit input from all of our school communities. We'll hear from our principals, and through them, we'll hear from our families and teachers on things that they think maybe aren't working so well within the handbook, updates that would be beneficial for students and families and staff. And we'll collect all of those, and then those suggestions will go through a vetting process where it's reviewed by cabinet, by principal groups, and then ultimately, it comes here to the Board for your final review and approval. It is provided to all of our families. In the past, we would mail it home at the beginning of the school year, typically in August. Just last year, we moved to an electronic format, and so now what we do is we send a communication home to all families with a link to the electronic document. And then paper documents are printed as well, not as many, but there's a few at every building for those that still want to receive a paper copy. It is reviewed in all of our schools with our students. It's done in a developmentally appropriate way at each level. Each school might do it a little bit differently, but they all do that review with their students for all of the key points in the handbook, and then they do refreshers as the year goes on. And then finally, you can find the handbook on our district website. It is, I believe it's under the Tools menu, Parent Tools, and then you can also find it under the menu, under the About link, you'll find it there as well. It's translated into English, Spanish, and Somali by professional translators, and then now on our website, you can translate all of our content into a variety of languages, so it's available and accessible for all. Continuing on, let's talk a bit about the 25-26 changes. And again, I'm not going to go into granular detail on each of them, there are too many, but I'm going to hit as many high points as I can. So first, I've got a slide here on new and substantially changed sections. So the brand-new sections this year, we have two of them. There's a brand-new section on student health, and that's really just the basics with regard to student health, information about immunizations, about vision and hearing screenings that may occur at school, medication administration at school. Not new policy, nothing changed, but some basic information for our families on student health. And then we have a short paragraph on language access. What that does is it reflects the fact that this Board recently adopted a new language access plan, so that's briefly summarized there with a link to the full plan on the website. There are some substantially changed sections as well. I think there's four of them. Whoops, went too far, go back. We've got substantial changes to the Minnesota Healthcare Program section on page nine, student interviews with outside agencies, page 10, corporal punishment, restraint, and reasonable force, page 20, and I'll stop there to say those last two reflect changes to regulation that were made in the last year. And then you'll remember this one, the cell phone policy is something that this Board adopted, I think in March, maybe it was February. And so what we've done is we've replaced the old language on cell phones with the new language, the policy that you adopted just a couple of months ago. So that is there. Continuing on, the next two slides deal with changes to the section on student behavior and responses. So as you look at the handbook, there's many pages, the interior of the handbook looks like a grid, and there you'll see a listing of a variety of behaviors, behaviors that students may engage in that we don't want them to engage in, and then a listing of the consequences of the responses. And I believe there's four, first occurrence, second occurrence, third occurrence, fourth occurrence, with a suggested response for each behavior. So we made a number of changes, as we always do, to the behavior grid. I've got them listed here. Let's see. Here, with regard to changes to student behaviors, it could be one of two types. It could be that we're changing the description of the behavior to be more clear, or to cover more, or in some cases, to delete language, or it may be that we're either increasing or decreasing the consequence. So those are the two types of things that you may see. So for example, with number four, the first on my list there, abuse alarm, verbal, written, or otherwise expressed, we added a slight increase to consequences starting at the second occurrence. Similarly, or differently, to illustrate the other type of change, down on number 12, nuisance and/or recording devices, we added language, let me go there, to clarify the definition. Actually, number 14, technology-related, we added language, making it clear that misuse of a cell phone during instructional time, where our cell phone policy would prohibit it, will draw a certain consequence, typically stars, which is our lowest-level consequence to begin with. But we needed to call that out in the policy to be more explicit about what happens if you use a cell phone during instructional time. So that was one where we changed the language of the description. And then, one more. Continuing along, additional behavioral changes, there's a few of them here, just listed all of the ones that got changes. There they are. Again, it may be that we've enhanced the consequence, it may be that we've modified the language. So for example, number 21, assaultive behavior physical, we adjusted the language there to try to differentiate assaultive behavior from fighting, two very similar categories, and so we wanted it to be clear for both administrators and students what the difference was, and which one would draw which consequence. So that's where the clarifying language came in. And then down with number 44 and number 46, mace, pepper, gas, or taser possession, or weapon possession, we added tiered consequences in those sections to reflect the fact that sometimes a student may have pepper gas in their possession, but they don't intend to threaten anyone with it or use it, they're merely in possession. So we differentiated the consequence. If you have it and you're threatening someone with it, that's one consequence. If you merely possess it, that's a lesser consequence. So we've made some adjustments there. With that, I think I'm nearly at the end. A few housekeeping matters. Note that we are still in session, there could be additional legal changes. If changes occur that warrant inclusion in our handbook in their past between now and old business on June 9th, we'll do our best to infuse those in here, so stay tuned on that. If it's something larger where we'd really need to do more of a comprehensive policy review, we'll catch up with those changes the next year. Know that the final document will have updated forms for 25-26. Formatting will be cleaned up, page numbers put in, the cover letter from the superintendent updated, and then as we go forward, as this Board may make future policy changes as the year goes on, those will be infused in next year's, the 26-27 Overview of Student Rights and Responsibilities. So with that, that's all I have for you tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions, and I will be back with old business on June 9th.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And with that, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Anna?
I just wanted to say that I appreciate the clarifying language. Anyone who's raised a child knows how sometimes students can get, you can push language if it's not very specific, and so I'm sure that the adults and as well as the student appreciates the clarifying language. Specificity sometimes matters, and so I appreciate that.
It sure does. We try to be as specific as we can.
And I'm sure our students appreciate it, too, and the adults, I'm sure, as well. So thank you for that.
Other questions or comments from board members? Skowden.
Just wanted to quickly clarify that I know last year, we went to all electronic, but then if families want a copy, printed copy, do we provide them, or they have to print them on their own?
Well, certainly, they could print it on their own, but I'm quite certain if they were to go to any of our schools, or even call the district office, we could provide them a paper copy, yes. And all of the books will, or all of the schools will get a big box full of them that they can use as the school year goes on.
Thank you. I remember that was a big thing, I'm proud of that. I'm proud that we give anyone paper copies that need them, and I'm proud of, I think, the forty-some thousand dollars we saved in printing costs when we went to electronic, because every board likes that. Did you have something else, Anna?
I had one more question, I'm sorry. I love that we can now translate into any language. My second question, and I think you answered this before, can it also be, instead of just written, can it be auditory as well?
I believe it can. I'm quite certain on the website that you could, is there an audio option with accessibility tools to listen to it? I'm looking over at our communications department.
Not yet. What I'm hearing is not yet. Okay, so someday, that would be a next big win from an accessibility standpoint. Okay, thank you.
Excellent, good questions. Other questions or comments? All right. We will see you back on June 9th for the second reading.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next, I'd like to welcome Eric Hansen to the podium to go over the addition- to go over the addition of student school board members and revision to Policy 203.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the school board, and Superintendent Bolsoni. And before you tonight to review proposed changes to Policy 203, School Board Organization. The specific changes I'm going to discuss tonight can be found in Section 1 of the draft policy before you and relate to adding two non-voting resident student members to serve as ex-officio members during open meetings of the school board. This revision to the policy would allow an additional way for student voice and input as well as the opportunity to learn about policy, governance, and civic responsibility. Using the Minnesota School Board Association guidance, knowing that discussions are happening amongst our legislators as well as learning from other school districts who currently have students on their school board, our district administration is prepared to be directed to draft administrative regulations around the student application process and interest form, a process for reviewing applications, a process for student interviews and selection, guidance around details such as length of term and other responsibilities. I would also like to point out that within the draft revisions to this policy, you will see other technical minor adjustments made in other sections of this policy, most notably in Section 3, the section pertaining to officers. The proposed revisions seek to modify the existing policy language to bring it closer to the MSBA model policies. The language in Section 3 is drawn from both the MSBA Model Policy 202, School Board Officers, and the District 196 Board Handbook. Tonight, no action is needed. This is the first reading, and I will be back in June for approval of the revisions of Policy 203. If approved, I'll ask you to direct the administration to develop an administrative regulation and selection process for adding two students to the school board. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. This is an informational new business, so there's no motion or action item on this tonight. And this may be something the board wants to discuss at a future workshop. But at this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, please come up to the podium. You can just start by introducing yourself, your connection to the district. These are a little bit more informal, but we generally have two minutes for public comment during agenda items.
Sure thing. I appreciate it. And thank you, Chairperson Johnson, and members of the school board, Superintendent Michael Bolsoni. My name is Brady Sternberg. I'm a former member of this school district. I graduated last year. And I was really involved with a lot of you guys, with the school board. And I rise tonight to voice my support for these proposed changes. I think what's really clear is that we have a crisis of civic education in this country and in our state. And I think that this proposed action is a great way to kind of get ahead of that. I think something that I really liked that Mr. Hansen said was, you know, civic education. It really is about civic education. When young people can become involved in their community, when they can get a voice, when they can learn the process by which, you know, the laws that govern them, they are excited to keep staying involved. They are excited to learn more from their school district and from the people that they work with, and they learn from every day. And like anything in this school district, you know, it's about learning. And I think that we can learn a lot, and students can learn a lot, from the process of getting members on the board, and also for those students to learn more about what the school board does and the actions that they take throughout the state. So I look forward to this progressing, and I hope it goes really well. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Brady. I would be remiss if I didn't add that Eric Hansen mentioned some legislation happening. I happen to be tuning in to that live legislation, and I saw Mr. Sternberg testify from Washington, D.C. on that as well. So I know not your first time, but always great to see District 196 alum and still active in Minnesota, even when you're not physically here. So I just had to say, I saw you speak on that, too. Other questions or comments from the audience? Oh. Seeing none, questions or comments from the board?
Sorry.
I've got a question.
Yes, Robyn.
So thank you for explaining the proposed changes. In one of the things that you said that this would be an additional way to involve students. And so it's kind of a two-part question. First is, what are we currently doing to involve students? And how many students? The second part of that would be, how many students are taking advantage of those opportunities?
Yeah, so our comprehensive high school principals, our other high school principals, our middle schools, they do have student groups that they're getting voice from, getting feedback from. I know when I was in middle school at Rosemont Middle School, we had a group that I met with and rotated that group to get other voices on there, too. So that's happening all the time in our secondary schools and could be somewhat layered into the process of this to make sure that we bring those voices here, too.
Thank you.
No questions or comments from board members? Yes, Leah?
I just want to say thank you for, you know, for bringing this forward and for the opportunity to have further discussion on this. I use a mantra that is really important to me in my day job and borrowed from the disability community about nothing about us without us. And so I use that for folks experiencing food insecurity, for basically anything that we're trying to do good work on, right? Let's center the people most impacted in figuring out the way forward. So I bring that up just to say that I think having students on the board is, could be an important opportunity for us to get that input. But I think it even starts with bringing them into a conversation about how we do this. What are the ways that they want to have more voice? We had some of them active in, you know, bringing a bill to us earlier on the same topic. And we had really meaningful conversation with those students afterwards, sort of to the question that was just raised about what are all of the ways that we can bring voice in? Because it's going to, you know, there's no way that two students can carry all of that, right? And it's similar to, for us, you know, we have different hats we wear as parents or, you know, as community members. And yet, we can't always represent everyone, right? There has to be a pass for people to speak for themselves. So just know that I think that's going to be really important to me as we continue to explore the right way to do this is, what do our students, and former students even, you know, think about what is the most effective ways for them all to have voice? And then how does that bubble up into anyone who would be playing that primary representation role?
I appreciate you bringing it up. That's a good point. One of the processes I took in coming here tonight is I met with five or six local superintendents who have students on their school board to ask those questions. Now, these current superintendents were one high school districts. However, one of the superintendents came from a sixth high school district and talked a little bit about that layered leadership. I think what you're referencing to bring those voices, which would be similar to something that we'd need to consider as well.
Other questions or comments from board members? Jackie?
I agree with Leah and Brady. Thank you again for your comments. When you look at, I've been on the MSBA board and was proud to serve that and have given out the checks to students who are on boards. And if you're in Malaca or if you're in Lakeville and you're a one high school town, that's a bit different than if you come to our district and you've got four comprehensive high schools and the School of Environmental Studies. I wish, so the number doesn't seem right to me. But we can't have four students on the board. That doesn't seem right. But, so I'm thinking, I'm looking around and looking at other schools. And I think a better idea, and it goes with, yeah, two students can't carry everything. And we've got lots of different students that come to our, and celebrate with us. I mean, just today, we got the host students, we've got the computer science people. We've got the people that came that are in the debate. So you've got all of those kinds of people. You've got people coming in with sports, things that they bring their background, their story to the board. I think a better idea would be to create a student representative committee from all the high schools. Minneapolis has a great model that we could look at and have a committee of those, maybe five students from every high school, and then pick from there the two people that want to come and represent the board. As I said, Minneapolis has a great model that you can look at. St. Paul does, too. I think it might be, I would like to see the administration come back, look at some of these and come back and bring it to us. In Minneapolis, they have what they call the Citywide Leadership Board. You have to be on the Citywide Leadership Board, and there's five students from every school. And then there's very defined classifications of your responsibilities. You have to commit for a year. Two people will, then you can attend, you need to attend the meetings. You need to be dedicated for, and it's going to be this many hours. We have a lot of students that come and work on our Legislative Advisory Committee, our Budget Advisory Committee, our Curriculum Committee. So those people, if they got together with other students from other schools, could share their voice. And then, to me, the voice would be more authentic when they're sitting here at the table. It's hard when, if you're going to just come in here and sit down and try to comprehend what we're, what the things that we talk about. You know, you're going to come in at the middle of a budget cycle, and where is your input? Where is the place that you can, as a student, bring your input? Well, I would, I think we should do this at school. Oh, well, sorry, we can't do that because that would have been the budget from last year. We're now talking about, we're in the middle of this budget and the budget. So I think there's a lot of things that are, that I think that we need to really do have much more student voice. And I think we can be more strategic. I think we can help amplify student voice. So we have a bigger, we have a bigger pool of students that we're bringing rather than just two. I would like to see us amplify, at St. Paul, they do, they have says thirteen. I don't know. I could look for the Minneapolis one and see how many they think. But I'd like to see us widen out that pool so we have... I agree with you, Leah. You said two students can't handle this all. Are you going to, are we expecting then those two students to go back and report? If they were from Apple Valley High School and Eastview High School, then are they going to go and talk to the kids at Egan High School? Are they going to be getting information from middle school kids about what, you know, as they move forward? So I think I personally would like to see us either have a workshop on this or send it back to the administration and say, let's try, let's try to flush this out a little bit better. So that would be my recommendation.
Good. If I can just weigh in, I mean, I promised to hit other voices as well, but just a couple of things that I've heard so far. I do think there are probably additional avenues to get student voice. Absolutely. I think this is one recommendation and one step. It's not the solution. I think it is a movement in that direction, and I think movement is good. But I think a lot of the questions being raised are questions that I think I would trust the administration to work through and students in that position. Regarding like Minneapolis, actually, I was talking with the Minneapolis Board Chair last Thursday. They have two student school board members on the school board. And they come and they do other things, yes. And they, that student, that board chair was telling me how much they value those two student school board members.
Exactly. They come through their citywide student board leadership.
Absolutely. There's a lot of ways that they can come up. And again, I trust the administration to work through all of those minute details of how they do the selection. I don't think that's a board-level conversation of, to micromanage the exact selection process. But I do think it is a step in a direction. And I do think it's like, it's something that we can continuously improve upon. I don't think we have to necessarily tackle the entire problem in one big rollout. This is a, this is part of a solution. It is tried and tested in many districts across the state and country. And it could be a good way to start the process of getting additional student voice, knowing there's still going to be a lot more work to do. And I think you had a question.
Thank you. So this is, I've thought a lot about this one because this was one of my priorities when I ran. I wanted to see student voice, and I did absolutely want to see it on the board. As I've been on the board and I've seen how much more diverse and how large our district is, I think we're putting the cart before the horse to have a policy first without having a strategy.
Yes.
And I think the attempt, the, I don't look at it as a micromanage. I look at the board is, the board is, we set the vision, and I do believe that the administration is responsible for this strategy. If I'm, in collaboration, right? I do think speed kills. I do not, I am very reticent to approve a policy without any inclination of how it is going to be operationalized. I'm very nervous about that. It doesn't even talk about how it fits into our strategic roadmap. It is so fast, so fast. What I've heard is that there are other school districts that are doing that, Minneapolis, St. Paul. That's all I really heard in student voice. I still haven't heard, what is the problem we're trying to solve? Student voice over what? What is the voice? I mean, that's how generic it is. And as far as getting involved, that's still civic engagement to what end and how? For how many people? I still haven't heard enough to really sink my teeth into it. And it's not that I don't trust that administration can do it, it's that it's backwards. We should be going through, and there should absolutely be student voice. I'm looking at students-centered, and I'm looking at collaboration, I'm looking at community. These are the adults in the room deciding again for people without people. And that is the one thing that has been frustrating to me the most is that so many times that people in the room who had the influence and the power are forgetting that the people who have the most experience and the most to lose and the most to gain aren't always in the room to have the influence from the very beginning to build the system so it's sustainable. And so I appreciate one or two people who have the best interests in mind, even I did. Now that I'm in the space, the best thing I can do for our constituents is to make sure they're in the room when it happens and that they have the opportunity to help build it from the ground up. Because that's where it's going to be sustainable. And so I don't think the policy, I think that it should be vice versa. I'm all down for the policy, but I want to make sure that we are doing the right thing for the students and that the students have a say on how it looks like and not us. And before I leave this my term or whatever that looks like, that is the thing I'll be fighting for, is making sure it's the right way. And it's not the adults who are figuring out for the students. I don't have a lot of faith at the policy, and then things will just miraculously happen. That's what I don't have faith in, but that's me. But I'm committed to making sure that it happens and it's sustainable. Because what I don't want to happen is that we have performance on a school board, performative, because I do know what that's like. And then we walk around saying it's successful when it's successful for two kids who can now put it on their college application and the other, I don't know how many other students now, don't get a voice. They don't have the privilege of having that on their application. And there's a lot of students who will miss out because of that because that's also inequitable, and that's what ends up happening. That's my concern. I want everyone to succeed. I would like to look at the Minneapolis model, but I want us to create a model that's the best model for us. I'm not, I don't know enough about Minneapolis. I don't mind drawing for Minneapolis as a starting point. So, and Jackie, you and I don't always agree on things. So, I mean, this is, the fact that Jackie and I are agreeing, we're sometimes polar opposites. So there's something here. This is something, but I'm saying that there's something here that the fact that we are seeing something here is unusual. And I feel like there's something, there's a there there.
I think because we're both looking at student voice in a larger, not two students talking, a larger group of students talking and bringing information to us. So that would be...
I don't, that's just me. That's me. But I can't speak for anyone else on the board. That's me.
And that's great points. Thank you. I just wanted to address a couple of things. I don't think this was done backwards in terms of getting it to the board to have a discussion. This is exactly how we have discussions with informational items. And the way we do it is, this is a policy change. So we have to start by talking a policy change and bringing it. This is not an action item, and I already said, so I don't, I just don't want to, I just, that was said. And I don't want to insinuate that anyone thinks that this was done backwards.
No, that was my opinion. This was just my opinion. I spoke for myself. Yeah.
This is just the way that boards have to bring stuff with the open meeting law to have the discussion. So... So don't insinuate you did anything weird or anything like that. This went through policy committee as well. So it's, and that's why it came to be here for informational also. And I would just add, I think there's like a student, like student voice is a big thing that we can capture. Like I said, this is a step in a direction, but, and we can definitely have workshops, but, I mean, we also need some solutions, too. There's a lot of uncomfortableness, but not a lot of recommendations, how to move forward with a big, big plan. This is developed in our overall strategy. It is part of it. It is part of that strategic framework. But again, it's one step. It's not everywhere. But yeah, I'll open up to other questions because I think I saw Secoude. Go ahead.
I just wanted to quickly add that we have in this discussion, I'm happy that we have in this discussion, and I totally agree what is being said, each one of the board members. I'm in support of it. For one, we have, we all want to give a voice and to student representation. We have, I have always, always straggled, I've been advocate for that. And also civic education, civic participation is really important. We have listened, a lot of students' groups that come here talk to us, there's been a lot of different ideas that's been thrown at us. I like the fact that we are trying to be proactive about some things, but the thing is we are missing options, how we usually do policies. There's a lot of things that we're missing to how we're going to implement to this. And as a board, by statute, we have the legal responsibility to look at what is piece of policy before it is introduced, is this implementable, what is unintended consequences, this my brain. So that's the factor of it. So I'm happy that we have in this discussion, but we're going to take it back to the cabinet, which we have always done. The readjustments we've always done, there's always been options that's been brought to us. Maybe look at this, what options is available, how we can accomplish this. I've seen it, there's been discussion of two-year term, one-year term, to what? I mean, there's a lot of things that we need to discuss. It is our responsibility that to make sure that, how we can best implement this, if any, so.
So what I'm hearing, if I were to summarize the majority of comments, and please speak up if you have something else you want to say, but I'm summarizing, please, this is, disagree with me if you don't like this, but I'm kind of, what I'm feeling is the board would maybe like to have a workshop to discuss student school board members and kind of some of the high-level details so we're comfortable before we have a second reading or an action item. And again, I'm looking kind of for the majority of the board because I know we're a little divided. Or if someone has another opportunity or another idea. Sorry, Catherine, you haven't had a chance to speak yet.
Sure. No, I think it's a great conversation, super important. And I think what I'm hearing is that we would like to have some other options of infrastructure brought to us as to how would this be built so that it's representative? So some different options based on other schools that just show, you know, how are we going to make sure that different voices are brought by just two people, by two students? So some options to then react to about how that infrastructure is built. And I personally, I have elementary school kids that are going to go into high school and they have active councils, too. So I would love to see how it links all the schools to start super young with civic engagement because I think that's an opportunity where we, you know, start young with this education of how just their government works up to us. So I think having some things to react to and respond to are helpful, different options that might strike a chord with us.
I think, okay, I was just going to say, I think this all shows we're very passionate about having students involved.
Yeah.
Yes.
Like, we all agree that student voice is important and we want to capture it. We're just trying to also trust that we're doing our board work and we're not getting into the weeds of your work. But, you know, being in this seat, we know what all it can encapsulate and we want to do so in a way that's meaningful for as many students as possible and not just, and while we don't have the answers, because we do want to trust administration because you do a wonderful job, but we just want to make sure that we're capturing as much as we can. And so I think that's where the passion comes from and giving us just like a few bumpers, you know, or guidelines, like we could do A, we could do B, or pieces. So we are, you know, getting as many kids as possible because we all really do want student voice.
Yeah.
Absolutely something we want to capture. So I think that it just speaks to how passionate we are.
Right. I think what you said earlier is really what we're basically talking about. We need more information, especially how we're going to implement this. And yes, given the amount of questions that we have, workshop will be the perfect thing to have, where we will have strategies, things to, you know, look at so that all our questions are answered. Then we'll go back to routine, maybe second reading, third reading, and so forth.
Perfect. Thank you. Is everyone, this isn't an action item, but can I just, we're in an open meeting, so I can say, can I get a head nod if the board would like to tackle this for a workshop topic?
Yes.
All right. Perfect. So I'm going to look at administration, too. What other information do you need from the board to be able to generate a good workshop? And you can ask later, too, but I know I'm putting you on the spot. But is there, did you get enough from our dialogue tonight? Because this was a great conversation, by the way. Thank you to all the board members who waited.
Yeah, no, I think it's all, it's a great discussion and certainly thoughts have gone through my head as I process through this and ask questions around, certainly we want to involve our high school principals in this as well. So I think, I think the thoughts are wise and I'm happy to have a workshop model and really dig into this.
Excellent.
Is there possibly any former students that could maybe have any ideas that you could maybe reach out to about maybe how they would maybe approach that with former students?
We have lots of them.
Oh, there's somebody waving. I can't think of anyone. Wait, somebody might have raised their hand. Brady? Okay. Are you going to stay afterwards and maybe have a, okay, that'd be great. Thanks, Brady.
Thank you for this discussion. Eric and I and others have been really thinking about this. We've got some high school principals in the audience here, too. Thank you. And Brady, thank you for being here as well. It's an important topic we've been talking about actually for quite a while and thinking about how to encourage students to be part of what we do. I think that's really important, both at the local school level, but also at the district level, on our advisory councils and coming to different meetings and speaking and things like that. One question I have for the board, just in thinking about the time of school year, May, I'm going to talk about graduation here in a few minutes. What is the timeline that the board would like to look at in terms of having a workshop or putting students on the school board? You know, we were working, trying to maybe make this happen for next fall. I don't know that that's more important than slowing down and doing it right. One of the things I heard tonight was maybe slow down, talk to more students, get more voices. That can be part of multiple plans we put out, but that does take some time. And I just want to test or ask a little bit about your vision for a timeline for this project.
Part of me just thinks it would be great for the student board members to join when new members are put in in January, you know? It's a natural time where you get, you know, the new chair and vice chair and all of that. At the same time, it doesn't allow for them to have a full school year, you know? So it would all depend on their term, but it seems like that would give them the true experience to have them come on when other members come on to the board, but I don't know how feasible that is.
Okay. That's helpful.
I'd support the January timeline.
I like that.
Yeah. So if you want a backwards plan from January?
Sure.
Kind of help us with workshop dates?
Yeah, I think we should for January, understanding we might need to be a little nimble because students aren't available. Not all students are available in the summer.
Correct.
With work schedules and they're not in the classroom, they're not at school.
Correct.
So.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, board, for the excellent discussion. This is the discussion I like having at the board table where we can hear ideas, get some consensus, how to move forward and not have to take any action. I love that. I love those items. So thank you very much and we will be talking soon.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
All right. We have nothing under other action items tonight, so I will turn it over to Superintendent Bolsoni for superintendent updates.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Johnson. This past Saturday, May 3, I along with others attended the South of the River Powwow, supported in part by our own American Indian Education Program in collaboration with other programs as well. It was a highly successful event with an estimated 500 people in attendance. And a day like this takes many staff and volunteers and I want to thank everyone involved for making it a great day. In April, our high school students completed more than 1,900 pre-ACT tests and almost 2,000 ACT tests. We also had more than 400 students working on their bilingual SEAL exams. It was the first time that District 196 administered the ACT in a digital format. We received positive reports from our schools and district assessment team who helped support these tests across the district. This week, all of our high schools are completing AP exams, these are advanced placement exams. Approximately 2,300 students in grades nine to 12 will be taking a total of 4,800 AP exams. These AP courses, advanced placement courses expose students to college-level rigor in their coursework and students have the opportunity to earn college credits based on their exam performance. And we want to wish all of our students good luck on their AP exams. Tonight is the last regular school board meeting, regular school board meeting before the class of 2025 graduation ceremonies begin. I want to congratulate more than 2,100 seniors who will graduate from District 196 this year. We will recognize them for their hard work and perseverance in achieving this milestone. We wish them all the best in the next chapter of their lives. Commencement ceremonies for our four comprehensive high schools will be held on Saturday, May 31. Egan High School ceremony will begin at 2:25 in the school stadium. The other three comprehensive high school ceremonies are at Mariucci Arena with Eastview starting at 12:00 PM, Apple Valley High School 3:30, and Rosemont High School at 7:00 PM. This week, we kick off our celebrations with the Native American Cultural Honoring Ceremony on Saturday, May 17 at 1:00 PM at Central Park in Rosemont. Graduations will also be held at several other district schools and programs later this month and in early June. A complete list of graduation ceremonies is available on our district website at district196.org. Lastly, I want to encourage District 196 students, parents, and citizens to consider applying for membership on one of our district advisory councils, which are accepting applications now for terms that begin with the 25, 26 school year. Advisory councils create awareness about important educational topics. They provide opportunities for advocacy on behalf of students, families, and staff, and advise the staff, administration, and the board on topics and issues that are essential to them. And more information is available, again, on the district website. Thank you.
Excellent. Are there any other items that board members would like to share? Seeing none, that brings us to our adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Robin, second of Secoude. And all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned.